Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2024 Special and Annual Town Meeting. A quorum being present, this special town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to the special town meeting so that we may open the annual town meeting. I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. As required by Massachusetts General Law, the Chief of the Fire Department, Scott Duffy, asked that I point out the exits from the auditorium in case of the emergency, the doors you came in and the two exits down here. On behalf of the Town of Rockland, I'd like to thank everyone for attending the meeting this evening so the town can continue to operate next year with the completion of this town meeting, the annual town meeting. When we get to the budget, which is Article III, it has been the practice the past four years to take one vote for the total amount of the budget. This saves calling for 58 separate votes. Before we take a vote on it, if someone has a question or concern about a particular budget or budgets, they will be allowed to talk or ask questions about said budget. We'll then take those situations one by one and vote on the total amount of page 44. When we arrive at Article III, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to allow you time to get the budget in front of you, which begins on page 15 of the warrant booklet. Then-town manager Doug Lapp will give a short overview of the fiscal year 2025 budget. After that, if there are no more further questions or objections, we will vote on the total budget listed on page 44. As we've done in the past four years also, we'll be voting on the Water Department budget, which is Article IX, and the Sewer Department budget, which is Article X, as their funds come from water and sewer revenue. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the salute to the flag and a moment of I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I would like to take this moment of silence for all of our deceased former town employees and officials who faithfully served the Town of Rockland, for all of our deceased veterans who served in the armed forces, and to all of our deceased residents who have since died since our last town meeting. The special town meeting and the annual town meeting are being videotaped by WRPS TV. It is required that all my non-registered voters present must sit in the forward rows in the section to my left. If you wish to speak on an article, please raise your hand. When I recognize you, please come down to the microphones down front, state your name and address before speaking. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes when speaking on a budget item or article which is being acted upon. No speaker who has previously spoken on the same budget item or article will be recognized until all others who wish to speak have had their opportunity. Now I'd like to introduce the people that are up on the stage. To my immediate left is the Town Clerk, Liza Landy. Next to her is the Town Administrator, Doug Lapp. Next to him is the Town Accountant, Scott Curtis. At the other table is Attorney John Clifford, who is Town Council, and the Land Use Council tonight is Attorney Chris Kenny. Also sitting to my left down front is the Town Planner, Allison Quinn, and the Assistant Town Administrator, Courtney Bergard. Now I'd like to introduce the newly-elected town officials at the annual town meeting. Town Clerk, Liza Landy; Town Collector, Judith Hartigan; Town Treasurer, Allison Sullivan; Select Board Member, Tiffany Needham; Board of Assessor, Charles Wenner Jr.; Board of Health Member, Tina Galant; Housing Authority Member, Kimberly Di Senzo; Library Trustees, Carol Cahill and Jean Morton; Park Commissioner, Joseph Reese; Planning Board Member, Randolph Hobelzell; School Committee Members, Jill Maroney and Michelle Bissonette; Sewer Commissioner, Daniel Duross; and Water Commissioner, Deborah Duner. I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. Finance Committee for this past year has been John Pumphrey, who is the chairman; Catherine De Sault; Nicholas Labalita; Robert McDonald; Kelly Murphy; Bill Stewart; Bill Principi, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee; and Linda Sternfeld, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. And this past year's Capital Planning Committee is Christopher Fulton; Richard Harris; Douglas Wallo; and Lauren White. I want to thank them, and I appreciate all the time that they give on these volunteer committees and try to get everything set for this year's town meeting. I would appreciate a round of applause for them. I do have openings on the Finance Committee, and I have one opening on the Capital Planning Committee. If anyone is interested, please contact me or the Town Clerk's office, and they will get ahold of me. I had two people come forward last year, and it really made a difference. Both of these committees worked very hard to prepare the fiscal budget prior to the town meeting. The voters have the correct concise information as we progress through the warrant booklet tonight. The Finance Committee works along with the Town Accountant's Office, the Town Administrator's Office, the Board of Selectmen to make the best decisions for the town. I will now swear in my tellers. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for the purpose of returning to the special town meeting. I have a motion, a second? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum is present, I will now call the special town meeting to order. And if we turn to page page four in the warrant booklet, Article Number One. Will the town vote to authorize the accounting department to pay the following unpaid bills of a prior year as of June 30, 2023, for the current year departmental budgets as listed or take any other action relative thereto? The figures are here to do with the school department, and the reason the emergency is the above-mentioned invoices were unpaid June 30 and were not requested in time to meet the deadline to be paid via encumbrances. The invoices should be paid as soon as practical to minimize hardship for the vendors. It was requested by the Town Accountant, approved by the Finance Committee. I need a nine-tenths majority of this. I'd like to have unanimous to pay these bills. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you. Article Number Two. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $260,000 as follows for the fiscal year 2024 snow and ice deficit or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, these items must be addressed as part of fiscal year 2024, requested by the Town Accountant, approved by the Finance Committee from free cash. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Three. Will the town vote to confirm and revote the following articles originally approved at the November 7, 2023 special town meeting as required by the State Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto? The school department is for spent expenses is $300,000. The current and new fire station feasibility study was 150. The training grant match for the fire was $4,102.86, and the police was additional funding for the police station roof HVAC project. This vote is required by the Department of Revenue. Town accountant requested it, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Four. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate bar or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $200,000 to supplement the funding authorized from Articles 35 and 36 from the May 1, 2023 annual town meeting for the replacement of the flat rubber membrane roof and rooftop HVAC unit at the Rockland Police Station or take any other action relative thereto? And now I'll ask Doug Lapp to speak on this because it was approved by the Finance Committee, but he has other information.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We put this article in the warrant as a contingency in case we needed the additional funds because our more recent cost estimates for the replacement of the flat rubber membrane roof and the HVAC system at the police station were continuing to escalate. So this was an estimate we put in as a contingency. We did just have our bid opening last Wednesday night, and I'm pleased to say that the bids came in within the amount of funding already available, including a reserve fund transfer that was just voted earlier tonight. So with all that, I'm pleased to say that I recommend you pass over this article, and we do not need to make this appropriation.
I need a motion to pass this article over. Second? All those in favor of passing over Article Number Four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Five. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $400,000 for unanticipated and extraordinary fiscal year '24 special education costs or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, these unanticipated costs must be paid in the current fiscal year, requested by the school committee, approval by the school committee, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, funding from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article Five signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Six. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds the sum of $50,000 to purchase two student transportation vans or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, these unanticipated costs must be paid in the current fiscal year, requested by the school committee, approved by the Finance Committee, funding from free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article Six signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Seven. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $250,000 for the purpose of contractual buyout, retirement, vacation, or sick leave buyout and other non-salary payments or take any other action relative thereto? These payments must be made in fiscal year '24, requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article Seven signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Having finished the articles, I would request a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Do I have a second? Motion and a second to dissolve the special town meeting, all in favor? Those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum is present, and I will now call the annual town meeting to order, and the chair recognizes Finance Committee Member Bill Stewart to...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to take all articles in the order in which they are printed.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of taking the articles in order signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the first action on each article will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. All right, we can turn to Article Number One. Will the town vote to cast votes in the 2025 annual town election for the election of candidates for the following offices, which are listed before you, requested by the Town Clerk, recommended by the Board of Selectmen? All those in favor of Article One signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article Number Two. Will the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation for all elective officers in the town in the amounts indicated in the department budgets and make such salaries and compensation effective July 1, 2024 fiscal year 2025 in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 108 as amended, and to raise and appropriate such sums of money for the ensuing year and that all sums be appropriated for the specific purpose designated and that the same be expended on for such boards and commissions of the town as voted or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee? All those in favor of Article Two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now we're going to begin, before we begin Article Three, I'm going to, the budget, I'm going to invite Doug Lapp to give a short overview of how he came to all this this year with the help of everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Regarding the town budget and all the financial articles, I'd like to thank our entire finance team, our Town Treasurer, Allison Sullivan; our Assessor, Meg Peterson; our Collector, Judy Hartigan; our Assistant Town Administrator, Courtney Bergard; and especially our Town Accountant, sitting to my left, Scott Curtis. As recommended by the Department of Revenue, we've continued using conservative budgeting principles. We're careful to not overestimate our revenues nor underestimate our expenses, and this has helped us continue to maintain our positive financial position as confirmed by our external auditor. In this town meeting, we're recommending contributing small amounts to our general stabilization fund, our capital stabilization fund, and our other post-employment benefits trust fund, known as OPEB, all of which are helping to maintain our strong AA-stable bond rating. While I truly understand the burden that property taxes impose on many in our community, especially those on fixed incomes, it's also important to put in perspective that based on our current tax rate, our average single-family tax bill continues to remain below the statewide average even after factoring in the Phelps Elementary School debt exclusion. One financial metric that remains vulnerable for the town is our overreliance on state aid, which funds approximately 25% of our town budget. This is generally beneficial to us when the state budget revenues are strong and we receive increased levels of state aid, but in times like we're in now where state revenues are coming in below projections, it has a disproportionately negative effect on our town budget and operations, especially for our school department. Another vulnerability that I'd like to highlight is the loss of our marijuana dispensaries host-community agreement funding per the recent change in state law. As a result, this could be the last year that we forward recommendations to town meeting to pay for a variety of capital expenses from the marijuana dispensary funds. We have been careful in the past, however, to not rely on the use of these funds for our operating budget, but in future years, the revenue to pay for these one-time capital expenses will unfortunately have to shift back to you, Rockland taxpayers. As it relates to the operating budget, rest assured, the Finance Committee has reviewed and approved literally every single number in the budget and all the individual capital articles included in the warrant. Furthermore, there is a strong consensus among all the various boards and committees to recommend all of the financial articles in the warrant presented to you tonight. The proposed FY '25 budget before you tonight is responsible. It's balanced, and there are no uses of one-time funds for regular recurring operating expenses. The school department operating budget is increasing by 3.1%, not counting the additional free cash appropriations included in the budget, excuse me, not counting the additional free cash appropriations included in the warrant, and the general government operating budget is similarly increasing by a little over 3%. The only substantive increase to the general government operating budget is the creation of a new cemetery department. It's Budget Number 481 on pages 33 and 34 of the warrant. This new department is required as a result of the town being forced to take over ownership and control of the Mount Pleasant Cemetery last year. This will allow us to properly manage burials and the maintenance of this historic cemetery going forward. In addition, the two new employees in this new cemetery department will also be cross-trained as laborers in the highway department so they can do general highway tasks when not working at the cemetery. As I alluded to earlier, we're also proposing small increases to our OPEB and general stabilization accounts and a more significant increase to our capital stabilization fund in order to save up for some large capital projects. And to reiterate a point that I made earlier, these increases in our reserves, no matter how small, are still very important to help us maintain our strong bond rating. With that, I'd like to thank you all for coming to town meeting. I'd also like to thank our school committee and the school department, which, as you know, is by far the largest department in town, for the extremely positive relationship that we've continued to maintain during the past year. Our communication and collaboration with the school leadership remains strong. I'd also like to thank the Capital Planning Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Board of Selectmen, department heads, Town Council, and the Planning Board for all of their support and guidance, and especially throughout the budget process. I'd especially like to thank the Finance Committee for all their efforts, meeting with each department head, and reviewing literally every single number in the budget and the warrant these past many months. We're all working together to help Rockland continue to move forward. Thank you.
All right, before we, as I said, I will take questions or other comments, amendments or whatever, and I recognize the lady in the middle here, that she had her hand up. Come down and speak. Just when you get to the microphone, just state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm actually of the male gender, but my name's Robert Stevens.
I beg your pardon.
That's all right, that's okay. I live at 62 Concord Street. I'm actually a member of the Board of Health as well, and I had a question on Number One for the town elections. It says that each, and I actually talked to Liza about this, and I showed her beforehand, but it says for the Board of Health that there's two seats going to be open for election next year, which isn't correct, and actually according to the charter, one-third of the seats have to be up each year as close as possible. Obviously, you can't do that with five-member boards. You're going to have one year with only one seat, but for the Board of Health, it's a three-year, excuse me, three-member board, and, you know, every three years, someone can go up for election. So I called the Town Clerk's office and let them know, and they said that it was a mistake, but that it'd have to be corrected on the floor, so I'm just wondering how we can fix that.
I'm sorry.
So it should be one seat in one, two?
Oh, Article One, okay. Attorney Clifford, I was going to just say that this was a typographical error.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, John Clifford, Town Council. Article One is really something of a formality. It does not dictate the offices that will go on the ballot. It's really strictly a formality that we voted every year, but the Town Clerk, when she puts together a ballot for next year, she can only put the seats that are available, and that would be correct, one seat on the Board of Health.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
And I apologize. I'm just jealous because you've got a lot more hair than I do. A hell of a lot more. Okay, back to the budget. Do I have any questions regarding anything in the budget that need to be discussed? Somebody's coming down front, and I apologize, I can't always see that far away.
How are we going to vote the budget?
Well, it all depends what you're going to say up here, and if there's an amendment, we're going to vote on amendments.
Name of the amendment.
Okay.
And we're going to start with, my name's Celine Furlong, 677 Union Street in Rockland. Celine Furlong, 677 Union Street in Rockland. I'd like to make a motion on Item 152 Personnel. Do I need to give you all these numbers?
No, I need which department?
It is the HR Director.
All right, hold on.
Page 18.
18.
Personnel.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's page 18, 152 Personnel, HR Director, okay.
So we have a brand-new HR Director coming in and is going to get the 2.5% raise and hasn't worked here for any time because we just lost our HR Director. But after, what, three months, they're going to get a 2.5% raise?
Is this going to be an amendment?
My motion is to make that a 102, 042, 85 for that HR Director. That's my amendment.
And what are you reducing it to?
To the starting balance instead of the raise. It's the initial...
The 102, 042, 85? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can discuss it further.
So we just lost our HR Director, so we're going to hire somebody new and give them the 2.5% raise that somebody else earned, or... I don't understand.
Doug, the Town Administrator?
Do you need this, Kevin?
I will.
Thank you for the question. It's important for a town meeting to recognize that the budget has to be finalized and the warrant has to be set within certain legal timeframes in time for the correct amount of time for posting, legal advertising, et cetera. So at the time of the warrant was posted, this was the salary for the then-existing, long-serving HR Director. Since that time, as Ms. Furlong identified, that person has now left. We have just hired a new HR Director, and that person's starting salary, effective at the end of this month, going through, all the way through the end of FY '25, is $100,000. So it's actually less than the amount that you cited and less than the FY '24 budget. But again, the warrant had to be finalized before that decision was made. So the bottom line is the new person is not getting the 2.5 raise, they're going to be earning $100,000 through FY '25.
Hold on, would you want, you can withdraw the amendment if you're satisfied. If not, we'll have to vote on it.
Well, maybe we should amend that to $100,000. I need to change that number to $100,000 because right now it says they're going to make $102,000.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, go ahead.
So my recommendation is we're dealing with an approximately $80 million budget, so different things come up. We do bottom-line budgets in each department. Other expenses can run a little bit over, so my advice to town meeting would be to not try to adjust this by $2,000, given that it's a bottom-line budget and looking at the big picture. That's my advice.
So at this point, I have an amendment and a second to make the figure $102,042.85. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to accept the amendment.
I have a question on Number 192 Town Hall, custodian.
Just let me find it.
Yep.
Page 22.
This is page 22?
Number 192 Town Hall.
In the middle of the page, 192 Town Hall, custodian, okay? What's your motion?
My motion is to change that to a 2.5% raise, which is what everybody else got, or most everybody else got, but at this point... everybody else got. But at this point, so the amendment is to $14,492.62 from the $20,000, because that's a 50% increase.
Give me the numbers one more time. I got 14...
492, I'm sorry, 14, 494.62.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yes.
All right, we can have discussion.
Mr. Moderator?
Doug Lap, the town administrator?
Thank you, thank you for the question. I want to be clear that this custodian is part-time in Town Hall. They spend other time at the library. The raise for this person is only 2.5%. The difference in dollars that you see is associated with more hours working in Town Hall and also better budgeting for overtime. You'll note, there's $2,000 of that $20,000 that's for overtime. And if you go down two lines where it says utilities, maintenance, you see we cut the budget by $2,000. Again, it's a bottom-line budget. We've been funding the overtime out of utilities and maintenance. So we're trying to better budget for this position and also increase the number of hours to better reflect the work that's actually needed. The actual salary of that person is $23.53, which is a 2.5% increase from FY '24.
I'll pull that one back. And my final one is number 510, the Board of Health.
That's on page 35.
And the, it is the, I want to make the salary for the health agent 77, 263.89.
77, 263...
.89.
Okay, I take that's a motion. Do I have, need a second?
Second.
I have a second. Doug, you want to speak first?
Do you want me to tell you why?
I didn't want to cut you off if you had more to add first.
Do you want me to tell you why?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, most people are getting 2.5. If you look at the department heads, they're getting 2.5%. This is a 13.33% raise, and I don't understand how one department head could get so much more than the rest.
The Board of Health is here, Mr. Stevens. I recognize Mr. Stevens had come down. He's a member of the Board of Health.
Oh, Celine, thank you for the question. So when we looked, we looked at, you know, various different salaries for the health agent in multiple surrounding towns, and we're talking like, you know, we're not looking at Duxbury and all that. We're looking at actual, like, Whitmans and Holbrooks. And right now, I mean, I suppose why the question kind of is, in the context of seeing other department heads get a 2.5% raise, why 13% raises in line. But when you looked at the average, which I think was about 80, between 84,000 and 86,000 for health agents in the area, I mean, again, like, there were some, like, obviously Norwell, I think, was like 106,000 or something. But we were essentially looking at salaries of different health agents in the area. And speaking with other boards on the South Shore and in our cooperative, we found that when a health agent, when the position of health agent becomes vacant, it's almost a nightmare for a Board of Health, especially right now, to fill it. And like, for example, a lot of the qualifications that we needed, the last time we went to go fill this position, this was, I think, a year before COVID, you know, half of the qualifications weren't even, for the most part, met by a lot of applicants. So we were just, essentially what we did when we made this increase was look at the surrounding towns, decide what the average was. And I think she was making about, between, I think it was about 73,000 initially. And when other towns are making between, you know, 85 and 100,000, and you need good talent for a health agent, it kind of scares you to kind of see how long you can get away with keep paying them 73,000 in comparison to all these other towns, which, for her, might be very tempting. So essentially, what happened is, after a while of making that wage, she asked for a salary increase. And what we did was just look at all of the surrounding towns. So she was making that 73 for about, God, well, I think the last, since she got hired a year before COVID. And that was, you know, 12,000 under the average of 85. That 73 that she was initially making, I think it was 73 or 75 or something, was like, again, 13 behind everything. All of her, like, when she goes up to the MAHB meeting, all her colleagues are making, you know, 15,000 more than her. So in the interest of not scaring away our talent, and in the event that she does, say, retire this summer or next fall or something, we wanted to have something in place that was able to attract enough talent. And, you know, we actually decreased it initially. It was a little bit higher, but we actually decreased it by a couple thousand just to really make sure that we were getting the right number. And again, the factoring in was just looking at surrounding towns, looking at other towns in our cooperative, looking at, you know, the potential for her to retire and trying to retain her, number one, while also, in the event that if she left, be able to, you know, get sufficient talent.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I have one more question. These other towns that you're looking at and comparing to, are they doing the inspections of restaurants and such throughout town? Because it's my understanding, you can't talk apples and oranges. If the inspections aren't being done by our health agent, are we paying an outside company to do that? So we're going to pay her more and still pay an outside company?
In terms of inspection, do you mean, I know she does housing inspections, for sure.
The restaurants?
I mean, she's certified to do them. I'm not sure, in terms of the day-to-day, if she's doing them. But I know she's certified to do food inspections, just as she is with health inspections.
I would like to submit this change.
You already have, you made an amendment. We have a second, so I need a copy of it.
And in the interest of retaining, you know, talent and just not scaring away our current talent, and in the event that we do, at least being able to attract more, in an event where there's a shortage of health agents, especially after, I mean, there was already a shortage of health agents, and then COVID kind of exacerbated it. They all got scooped up. So in the interest of, you know, I mean, it doesn't make a difference for me, but in the interest of, you know, retaining talent and making sure the town is safe, I would vote for it. Thank you.
Town administrator would like to speak on something regarding it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to highlight, we have tried to be more transparent in our budget presentation and the warrant, so I just want to be clear that people understand what you're looking at and voting on. If you look at page 35 of the warrant, where you see the health agent's salary this year, we're more clearly laying out where any funding is partially offsetting a salary from revolving funds. So just to be clear, the recommended salary in the budget is a total of $85,429. If you look one line below that, you'll see $17,796 of that amount is being funded by the Board of Health revolving fund. And if you look year to year, the year before, it was 9,396. So I just want to be clear that town meeting understands that this entire increase is not being funded by the general fund or property taxes. It's being funded from the Board of Health revolving fund. I just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Lori Childs?
Lori Childs, 234 North Ave. Is it true that our health agent does duties that other towns don't do? Is it, Robert, like, like the recycling centers?
That's extremely true, yeah. I mean, most towns have, I think their DPW or, yeah, DPW will handle the, reset the trash. And, but, for example, Mike Hugo, the president at the Mass Association of Health Boards, he came in and told us what an odd amount of responsibility that the Rockland Department of Health has in comparison to other towns. I mean, Lori raised a good point. In terms of like the trash, like the recycling center, that's huge. That's something that she's in charge of that most other, you know, towns aren't doing. So I know that, I'm sure, whenever she's not doing inspections, she's definitely, you know, she's got her head and her plate filled with something else.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Yes, I don't want to speak.
That's all right, take your time.
I should have stopped it soon.
That's all right. It's like the Price is Right. Come on down.
It's going bad, I'm concerned.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Teresa Buffum, 15 Condon Circle. There was something that was said that I'm not quite clear about, that we have a contractor that does the restaurant inspections. How much are we paying that contractor?
You'd have to ask the Board of Health gentleman that's sitting right there.
Well, this gentleman didn't know if the health agent was doing restaurant inspections.
That is, that is correct.
Are we live on the floor?
Yes.
Try it again.
Okay. Well, that is correct. I know she's certified to do them in terms of whether she has the time to do them and has to, because of all, you know, everything that she's doing in the office, whether she has to contract them out, I'm not sure in terms of the day-to-day. But I know she's able to do them if she needed to.
I'm a little confused. Isn't that one of the top duties of a health agent? I mean, I'm wrong on that.
When you don't have, again, when you're not in charge of many other things that other towns don't seem to be in charge of.
So when you compare to the other towns, were the health agents doing restaurant inspections?
Well, I didn't, we didn't...
You didn't get to that level, that degree?
Right, we didn't go to the level of, like, looking at, you know, Norwell's health...
So it's not a fair comparison?
Hold on, wait a minute. We didn't go down to looking at every single, you know, whenever we looked at the Norwell salary, we didn't, you know, travel to the town of Norwell and ask them what their day-to-day schedule was, you know, in terms of what they're...
Well, I'm a little confused. You haven't answered the question about how much we're paying the contractor to do the restaurant inspections. I'm concerned because I eat in the restaurants in Rockland.
Yeah.
And we're not doing inspections? That's what you're telling me?
That's not what I'm telling you. I just told you I'm not...
I think, I think what he said earlier, I think, that they asked what other duties those other towns had besides restaurant inspections. And I believe he answered, and I could be corrected, but I believe he did answer, that they did not do other duties such as the landfill of recycling and all that.
Right, I understood that.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think that was his explanation when asked about, previous about the restaurant inspections, Teresa.
Okay, yeah, I understood that.
So can she, yes.
Okay.
Now, does she, in terms of the day-to-day, relative to her schedule, I don't know whether she's able to...
That's a fair response. So are we paying the contractor or not?
I have no idea. I mean, you...
Oh, chance to tie one knot if you don't have an idea. Okay, good. That answers my question. Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, please, ma'am.
Catherine DeSalle, 325 Webster Street. I just wanted to note, as member of the Finance Committee, when we did meet with the Board of Health, oh, sorry, when we met with the Board of Health back on February 28th, the agent did note that she does outsource the initial inspections. When there is a need for a follow-up inspection, she does do that herself. So I'm hoping that helps clarify a little bit.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the amendment. And the amendment is, is to lower the salary to $77,263.89. All in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted not to amend the line item. Are there any other questions on our fiscal year '25 budget? If not, we're going to take a vote on the bottom line. Unless I...
I'd like to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Step right up to the microphone.
My name is Sandy Wood, and I live on 384 Union Street. And I don't know why no one's addressing the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room is, what am we going to be told about almost a half a million dollars that they want us to put the children from that hotel into the schools when there's been two rapes, a robbery by knife at the AA, at the AAA, and there's been at least six or seven more incidents? So you want to put them on the school buses with our children? Is that what we should do? I think this is the elephant in the room, and it needs to be addressed and not hidden.
I think Alan Cron will be back in a second. I think Jane's getting out.
I'm going to, I'm going to wait for the superintendent. He had to, I knew he stepped out. So, Mr. Cron, before, you didn't hear this. Your question, ma'am, was, what part of the budget, or did you...
I heard it was $450,000 you wanted to add to the budget on our tax, to put the people in the hotel, their children, into our school system, when we've had two rapes, a robbery by knife, a robbery across the street, and a robbery in 7-Eleven this bit, like, almost 10 different things. You need to protect that, so that's for us.
Thank you for your point. None of that is true?
It is true.
It's not true.
Oh, certainly it is.
Excuse me, ma'am.
There's, the funds that are being used for the Comfort Inn students are provided by the state. We essentially break even. So there is no cost to the taxpayers of Rockland for the students who are attending the Rockland Public Schools from the Comfort Inn.
Thank you, Dr. Cron. Do I have another question on the budget? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll get, you're next. I'm going to take the girl first, and just take a seat right there.
Hi, just, excuse me, my name is Julie Snee. I live at 74th Smith Lane, excuse me, 74th Smith Lane. I just wanted to reply to that comment and say that, to my knowledge, children did not commit any crimes in the emergency homeless shelter, and they have a right to education.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Ben Leatherman. I live at 631 Hingham Street. My daughter rides the bus with the children of the Comfort Inn, and I have absolutely no issue with it. I think it's great we're doing for those families and kids.
Thank you. Hearing, hearing no other discussion on the budget, I'm ready to vote on page 44, the top, up at the top, the total amount of the budget. All those in favor adopting Article Three, the town budget for next year, $78,876,907.34 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number four, will the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,500 to the trust, other post-employment benefits trust fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen, approved by the Finance Committee, raise and appropriate. All those in favor of adopting Article Four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number five, will the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,500 to the general stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto? Board of Selectmen requested it, approved by the Finance Committee, and it's from raise and appropriate. All those in favor of adopting Article Five signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number six, will the town vote to transfer the sum of $150,000 to the capital stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is free cash. funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article VI signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number seven, will the town vote to amend the Rockland Town Code, Division Two, General Bylaws, Part One, Administrative Legislation, Chapter 38.6, Department of Revolving Funds, by adding the following authorized revolving funds or take any other action relative thereto? This is for the parks department. It's revenue from field rentals, and it's going to be used for field maintenance and improvements. It was requested by the Board of Parks Commissioners, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and its funding source is service fees related to each fund. All those in favor of adopting Article VII signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number eight, will the town vote to authorize or reauthorize revolving funds for fiscal 2025 pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, as amended for the following purposes, authorize to expend the amount shown below or take any other action relative thereto? And on page 46, you have all the, the departments it is. It was requested by the town accountant, recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and the funding source is service fees related to each fund. All those in favor of adopting Article number eight signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number nine, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury, 4,000, I'm sorry, $4,605,297 to be expended under the direction of the Abington-Rockland Joint Works, Joint Waterworks Board of Water Commissioners for the purpose of funding the Enterprise Fund budget for the Water Department effective fiscal year 2025, with $4,446,128.2 for the Water Department operating budget and an additional $159,168.74 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget for indirect expenses as shown below, which is on the next page, or take any other action relative thereto? It was requested by the Abington and Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is water revenues. All those in favor of adopting Article Nine signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 10, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the Treasury, $3,945,551 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding the Enterprise Fund budget for the Sewer Department effective the fiscal year 2025, with $3,884,068 for the Sewer Department operating budget and an additional $61,483.43 to be transferred to the General Fund operating budget for indirect expenses as shown below, which is on page 48, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Sewer Commissioners, approval by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is sewer revenues. All those in favor of adopting Article 10 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 11, will the town vote to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2024, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation as follows? And it lists here revenues for the committee, $32,167, estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, for community housing reserve, open space reserve, all at the same amount of $64,334.56, and estimated revenues for budgeting reserve, $418,174.66. The, this was requested by the Community Preservation Committee. The Finance Committee recommends deferring to the committee, and I'd call on Steve O'Donnell, who's already standing there, the chairman of the Conservation, uh, Community Preservation Committee. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way, Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Make a motion that Article 11B voted on as written.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting Article 11 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 12, will the town vote to approve and expend from the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $20,000 to conduct a feasibility study for the reconstruction of the bicentennial park track or take any other action relative thereto? It was requested by the Park Commissioners, approved by the Selectmen, Park Commissioners, Community Preservation Committee, and the Finance Committee, and the funding source is Community Preservation Act funds. All those in favor of adopting Article 12 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, the next three articles have to do with the Community Preservation Fund, and I'm going to let Steve O'Donnell speak on the three articles together.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. I'm going to make a motion to pass over Articles 13, 14, and 15. Community Preservation Act Committee was not able to take the procedural vote in order for these articles to be legally funded. We'll continue to work with the applicants and seek to present these projects at a special town meeting in the fall, if available, or at next year's town meeting.
First action is going to come, I actually need a second on this. Thank you. Article 13, will the town vote to approve and expend the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $40,000 to construct a new Veterans 24 Tree Memorial, take any other action relative The first action will come to pass the article over. All those in favor, passing over the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 14, will the town vote to approve and expend from the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $9,500 to pay for expenses related to the preservation and digitization of the G A R Hall historic documents or take any other action relative thereto? First action is going to be to pass the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article 14 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went too fast. I pulled back that vote. Chair recognizes—
Jim Paul, 162 Webster Street, former chairman of the Historical Commission. We discussed this digitization and the restoration of this G A R book a number of times, and we discussed it with the CPA, CPC Committee, and we're just wondering why we're getting kind of submarine here.
Thanks for your question, Jim. I want to start by saying all three of these projects are very valid projects, and I'm sad to say that we can't vote on them tonight. Unfortunately, due to scheduling, we are a nine-man committee. Only six seats are filled. There's one at large, one from Conservation that has yet to be appointed in the last couple of years, one from Housing that's yet to be appointed in the last couple of years. That means we have to have five committee members at every single meeting. This makes it very difficult to schedule. Unfortunately, we take two votes related to any project that comes in. The first is on the pre-application to allow it to move forward to final application. As we were reviewing final applications, we did not get to review your final application in time, Jim, and I apologize for that. And so we were not able to take the procedural vote in order to allow funding to take place, and that's due to Massachusetts state law. And I want to say it is a very good project, and I, I do want to see it happen. We just can't do it today, and I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to ask if we could get some assurances, if we do have another meeting, that it can be adopted, and where's all the money that's been appropriated going to go?
Great questions. Like I said, I am a fan of all three of these projects. You will, you have an advocate in me for this, especially for this book. I think it's awesome. The money stays where it is. Money can't, for CPA funds, just for everyone, this money can't be used for anything else besides historical projects, open space, recreation, affordable housing. I think that's it, the four projects, yeah, the four, four line items. So that's all we can use it for. The reason CPA was stood up was towns would not normally spend money to fund these types of projects. So I feel very strongly about all of these projects, and these three were very good candidates. Unfortunately, it was just timing, and we had the best of intentions to have these ready for tonight. We just, we didn't, and I'm sorry.
I don't know what to say. Very disappointed, very disappointed.
Mr. Moderator?
Sir, you're a registered voter?
Yes.
I didn't recognize who you were.
Sorry. Peter Dow, 31 Union Street. Just a point of information for the chairman. Just wanted to clarify, you're saying Article 12 was properly voted upon by the CPC, but the, the other three were not? Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? We'll vote one more time because I didn't see Mr. Paul, and I apologize for not seeing him down there. All those in favor of passing over Article 14 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 15, will the town vote to approve and expend from the Community Preservation Fund the sum of $16,000 and construct Phase 3 improvements at the historic Tramp House on Spring Street or take any other action relative thereto? This has been, to pa— the first action is to pass over this article. All those in favor of passing over Article 15 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's vote. Article 16, will the town vote to authorize the Water Commissioners to take from the water undesignated fund balance the sum of $983,000 for the following capital projects or take any other action relative thereto? The reason this looks like such a large article, last year, I, I think we took almost 20 votes in talking to the town administrator. I thought maybe it would be better if, unless somebody has a question, that we would take them all in one article instead of voting 17 or 20 times. I don't see any questions. All those in favor of adopting Article 16, which was requested by the Abington-Rockland Joint Board of Water Commissioners, recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source water enterprise fund retained earnings. All those in favor of adopting Article 16 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 17, will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the sewer undesignated fund balance the sum of $415,000 for the following capital projects or take any other action relative thereto? This is the same reason we had a number of articles last year from the sewer. We thought we condensed them. If anybody has any questions, you're free to ask. This was requested by the Board of Sewer Commissioners, recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source is the sewer enterprise fund retained earnings. All those in favor of adopting Article 17 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 18, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to invite the chairman of the Sewer Commission, Sewer Commissioners down to read Article 18 as a motion. This is a borrowing article, and it's requested that the, a member of the Sewer Commission read this article by bond counsel, so everything is appropriate. And when we're, when he's finished reading that, I will need a second, and I would hope we need a two-thirds majority. If you have any questions for Mr. Heson, I'm sure he'd answer them, and if I can get a unanimous when this happens, it would be great. Mr. Heson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $12,500,000 to be expended under the direction of the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners for the purpose of funding wastewater treatment improvements and upgrades, including all costs incidental and related thereto, and including without limitation all costs thereof, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $12,500,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, and Section 29(c), or any notes shall be obligation, or shall be general obligations of the town, but is the intention of the town that the debt service first be paid from the sewer enterprise fund receipts, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or portion of such amount for the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Mass General Law 29(c), in connection with, connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the Board of Selectmen, Board of Sewer Commissioners, or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and take any other action necessary to carry out the project. It's requested by the Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, and the funding source is sewer borrowing.
Do I have a second? I have a second.
I have a question.
Mr. He— before that, Mr. Heson, is there anything you want to add?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Before you get a sit, Mr. Heson, sir, come on down. Come down to the other microphone.
Carl Ryan, 464 Street. So I went through this article. I just have a couple of questions. First one, debt service first be paid by sewer enterprise fund receipts. The question is, where do these sewer enterprise fund receipts come from? Is this generated from, like, our billing?
It's coming from the user fees that we collect, or new, or end or new connections.
Okay. And second, the treasurer, with the approval of the Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or portion of the amounts from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Is the intent to borrow all $12,500,000? And if so, has the Selectmen already voted on this, or if not, when?
Yes, it is to, to borrow the entire 12.5.
Okay. All right. So it's, okay. And the purpose of the funding the wastewater treatment improvements upgrades, including all costs incidental and related thereto, include without limitations all costs thereof? Is it possible to get a breakdown of the projects and cost estimates per project that will be funded by this?
Yes.
Okay. That's something that, that you can disseminate to, because it wasn't in here. All the other articles had a breakdown.
That is available online. There was an older study done on a facility assessment from 2019 that roughly broke it down into, into the cost at that time.
Okay, so that's, that's a while ago.
Pardon me?
That's a while ago, 2019. So the, the estimate's going to change by now?
It was a sewer study, a facility assessment study that was done.
Okay.
They broke them down. Those costs were based on the, the Consumer Price Index at the time. It was mo— it was modified again in 2021 in the CWMP, Comprehensive Wastewater Management Study.
Okay. So we can get a list of the actual projects that will be funded by this?
You can get a breakdown. It's going to, the study, the upgrade is going to be broken into four stages. Originally, we were going to do it over 10 years. Finances are not allowing that, so it looks more like it's going to be 15 years. Stage one will be, well, it's in the process now. That should take five to maybe eight years to come to fruition.
Okay. Okay. And then the funds, let's see. Oh, okay. So the funds are to be borrowed from Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, from which the town will enter to a loan agreement. Can we, as borrowers, being the town, get a copy of the loan agreement or amortization schedule? And what would be, the interest rate would be on that?
You want me to help you out, Chuck?
Mr. Moderator. So yes, at, when we get to the point, there's a long and rigorous application process to get approved by the Clean Water Trust, also known as the State Revolving Fund. The Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works has already gone through that process with their borrowing. The benefit of going through the Clean Water Trust is you might be eligible, you, we might be eligible, for 0% interest and potentially even principal loan forgiveness. So that's obviously what we'll be shooting for. We haven't issued the notes yet. We haven't gone through the process. We need the authorization first. Once we get through that process, that'll be public information. We're happy to share the debt schedule.
And we're also applying for grants and such that, due to state, for the feds.
All right. And I know part of this was going to be, you were going to be taking out bonds to pay for this, and then if not, the town would be on the hook for it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just remember that when you're voting.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let, let town administrator hold you back.
I, I just want to clarify. The funding for this entire 12.5 million, the entire thing, will be funded by borrowing, by bonds.
Right.
100%. The debt service, and this is what's important, that was written into this article and motion, and I'll just highlight, it's right in the, in the middle of this. It says that any such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, but it is the intention of the town that debt service first be paid from sewer enterprise fund receipts. So just to be very clear, if that were not the case, if the debt service was not funded from sewer revenues, it would have to come through general property taxes. You would need to vote a Prop 2.5 debt exclusion to be able to raise taxes to be able to pay for this. That's why this language is very clear, that the debt service for the borrowing will come from sewer revenues, which are generated from sewer fees that are charged to all the users plus other impact fees and other revenues.
So instead of property taxes, it's coming out of our water bill?
Sewer bill.
Sewer bill.
Correct.
Sorry.
Correct.
And as this point, as most people know, I'm on Forest Street. We still can't drink our water? Just, I want, I want you to keep that, you can't drink our, you can't drink the water. You can wash with it.
We're talking sewer.
We're in the, we're in the sewer, we got to talk about the sewer.
It's kind of, I just, you're paying the same bill all at the same time.
No, it's two different bills.
It's all in the same thing. You, you, I know you're paying separately, but.
Right.
You all understand what I'm saying.
If it would help, we conducted a rate study where we put the construction costs, the design costs, all into that. And it was calculated out. That's published and it's on the Sewer Department website as well.
Right, yeah, as long as it's public knowledge, that's great. I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to try for unanimous so we don't have to count. All those in favor of adopting Article 18 is read by Sewer Commissioner Hessian, which is in your booklet, page 52, signify with a show of hands. All those against? That's unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Article 19. Will the town vote to authorize the Town of Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners to enter into a five-year contract for the operation maintenance services related to the Town of Rockland wastewater treatment facility, with such contract to commence on or about July 1st, 2024, and at the option of the Town of Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners to att, to extend such contract for one additional five-year term as the Town of Rockland Board of Sewer Commissioners may deem favorable to the town, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Sewer Commissioners, approval recommended by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, funding source is the Sewer Department operating budget. All those in favor of adopting Article 19 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 20, will the town vote to authorize the Rockland School Committee to enter into a five-year contract for the school transportation services, and at the option of the school committee to extend such contracts for one additional five-year term, as the school committee may deem favorable to the town, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the school committee, recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source is the Sewer Department budget. All those in favor of adopting Article 20 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 21, will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $75,000 to fund town capital projects, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the town administrator, approved by the Finance Committee, funding from free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 21 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 22. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, $10,000, to fund needed actions on various derelict properties in town, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Building Commissioner, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 22 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 23. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate from available funds, a sum of $10,000, to fund the construction of a new ADA accessible front door at the Rockland Senior Center, or take any other action relative thereto? Counsel on Aging was requested by the Counsel on Aging Director, recommended by the Finance Committee, and the source is free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 23 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 24. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate, the sum of, sum of $152,000 to fund active shooter response training for the Rockland Police and Fire Departments, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Emergency Management Director, approved by the Finance Committee, and the funding source is free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 24 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 25. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate, or take from available funds, a sum of $265,000 to fund the purchase of equipment for the Rockland Fire Department, or take any other action relative thereto? They have replaced the ambulance cardiac monitors, fire radios, firefighting turnout gear. It was requested by the fire chief, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is the Marijuana Host Community Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Due to the use of Marijuana Host Community, these funds, I need a two-thirds vote. I'd like to have a unanimous for this emergency equipment. All those in favor of adopting Article 25 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 26. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from funds, $90,000, to fund improvements to the recycling center garage, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Board of Health, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 26 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 27. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $1,555,000 to fund Highway Department capital projects, or take any other action relative thereto? We, we put everything together in this like we did the Water Department and Sewer Department. There's, there's a, there's a whole list there. Does anyone have any questions? Because this is also coming from the Marijuana Host Community Agreement funds, I need a two-thirds majority vote. I'd like to have a unanimous if possible. All those in favor of adopting Article 27 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 28. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $40,000, to the fund the purchase and implementation of human resources software, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Human Resources Department, approval recommended by the Finance Committee, funding from free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 28 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 29. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $70,000 to fund capital improvements at the Public Library, or take any other action relative thereto? Calls for sprinkler replacement, $20,000, and Building Sewer Line Cleanout and Rehab Project, requested by the Library Director, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source $50,000 from free cash, and reappropriation of available $20,000 balance from Article 18 from the May 1st, 2023 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor of adopting Article 29 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 30. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, $134,500, to fund Parks Department capital expenses, or take any other action relative thereto? They want to replace the Spring Street Little League baseball fencing and a new pickup truck with a plow. It was requested by the Park Commissioners, requested, recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash. All those in favor of adopting Article 30 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $25,000, to fund an update for the town's housing production plan, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Planning Director, recommended by the Finance Committee, the source is free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 31 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $355,000, $711,000, to fund Police Department capital expenses, or take any other action relative thereto? There's a new animal control vehicle, tasers, and two new police cruisers, requested by the police chief, approved by the Finance Committee, free cash and Marijuana Host Agreement Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Because that money is in there, I do need a two-thirds vote, like a unanimous for these emergency items. All those in favor of adopting Article 32 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $155,000 to fund capital improvements at the McKinley Community Center, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Recreation Director, approved by the Finance Committee, the source is free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 33 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 34. Will the town vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into a lease of private commercial space for the Recreation Department's Community Center at such terms as they deem appropriate, and to authorize the transfer of $500,000 from free cash to fund equipment and capital improvements for said leased space, or take any other action relative thereto? It was requested by the Recreation Director, approved, recommended by the Finance Committee, the funding source is free cash? And I think that Doug, the lap, our town administrator, would like to comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This topic's been discussed extensively at many Board of Selectmen meetings and other committee meetings. I know everyone's busy and may not have time to see those meetings, so I thought I would just very briefly summarize what's going on with this article. As I think most everyone in the community knows, the McKinley Community Center building has a lot of deferred maintenance over many, many decades. When I first started here, about five years ago, we did a feasibility study with an architect to look at what it would cost to properly rehabilitate the entire building, because it's literally the entire building that has passed its useful life. The envelope, all the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, et cetera. At that time, pre-COVID, the cost was over $20 million to properly renovate the building. And I should highlight that the exterior is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, so that kind of restoration is also a little more expensive. At that time, the board did not feel comfortable asking voters for a 20-plus million dollar project to restore that building. So as time went on, we got an appropriation from town meeting and we hired a different architect to do a new feasibility study for the potential construction of a new Recreation Community Center to be located at Heart of Park. That study was completed and presented to the Board of Selectmen, and unfortunately, the cost of that new building was even greater than the cost of renovating the McKinley Building. Again, the board felt that that cost, which was between $35 to $40 million, depending on some of the alternates, was similarly not likely to pass at the ballot. So they instructed us to look at other options that might be available in the community to relocate the Recreation Department and the Community Center at significantly lower cost to taxpayers. The one, we issued a request for proposals, which is the formal legal process that municipalities have to go through if they're looking to acquire either by ownership or leasing property. There was one response to the proposal, which we've been evaluating on VFW Drive. This article would authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease under the terms and conditions that were most advantageous to the town. And while we do have that one proposal, the building will have to be renovated to be appropriate for a Recreation Community Center, for things like a gymnasium, community rooms, those types of things. So given that we don't know exactly what that cost of the renovations will be, that's the purpose of the dollar amount. So I hope that's clear. I'm happy to try to answer any other questions. I know the Recreation Director is here too. But again, the big picture is we're trying to look at a lower-cost alternative to properly locate the Recreation Community Center in a safe, accessible building. And if we were to continue to pursue this and ultimately move into a leased space, eventually down the road, we'd come back to town meeting to get authorization to sell the McKinley Building. And then if we go through the request for proposals process, ultimately, the, the goal would be to sell it to a developer that would have a mixed-use development, meaning both commercial and residential, put the property back on the tax rolls to help, help with everyone's taxes. So I hope that's helpful information.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Ward, 22 Nevin Circle. I'm just curious as to the terms of the lease. We're talking about, are they available at this point?
So the, the terms of the lease are not finalized yet. The purpose of this article is to give the Board of Selectmen the authorization to enter into a lease with final terms and conditions that would yet to be defined. It's, it's not done yet. We're still in that, in process.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article 34 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 35. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $11,000, to fund the purchase of a portable stage, or take any other action relative thereto? Requested by the Recreation Director, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 35 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 36. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $1,482,605, to fund School Department expenses, or take any other action relative thereto? This, as we turn the page, this is the same as we did with the Sewer Water Departments and so forth, requested by the School Committee, approved by the Finance Committee, funding source is free cash? Seeing no questions? Well, all those in favor of adopting Article 36 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 37. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate or take from available funds, a sum of $16,000, to fund the purchase of time and attendance software, or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Treasurer, approved, recommended by the Finance Committee, funding source free cash? All those in favor of adopting Article 37 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 38. Will the town vote to increase the maximum abatement that a senior citizen can earn under the Senior Citizen Workoff Program to $1,000 in accordance with Chapter 184, Section 52 of the Acts of 2002, as it amends General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K, for property taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025? Or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the Board of Assessors, approved by the Finance Committee, there is no funding source. Doug, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a tax workoff problem.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting Article 38 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 39. Will the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to request a special act of the General Court in the form set forth below, amending the town charter by replacing the current town charter in its entirety, replacing it with the language as follows below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approve amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further, the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to approve amendments shall be within the general public objectives of this petition. Now, I know you probably all want me to sit and read the next 20 pages. I don't think so. I, I know they had some outreach, they had some meetings. It was requested by the Board of Selectmen. It was recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Charter Review Committee. And I'm going to need a, I'm going to need a motion here in order to, to even talk about it. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Penny, the chairman of the Charter Review Committee, if I'm correct?
You were correct. Good evening. Rich Penny, 30 Center Ave., Chairman of the Committee that, that reviewed this, the Charter Review. So just a quick overview. This has been going on for about 18 months. As part of the process, back in 2019, at town meeting, there was an approval to fund an outside consultant. We chose the UMass Collins Center that have, they've written about 125 charters within the state, out of about 250 charters that exist. And the thought was if we were going to do this, we needed to bring professionals in to make sure that it was done correctly. To give a little overview, our charter originally was 1970. We have never in those 54 years done an in-depth review of our charter. There have been a couple of changes, a handful in the 90s, a couple in '08, and then most recently, a couple of real minor changes. But this was an in-depth process. The committee was a cross-section of a couple individuals who had never done anything within the town. There's been quite a few of us that had done some other things. One of the members was actually a current treasurer, elected official. One of the members was actually a current Treasurer, elected official. Couple of quick, without going deep into it, the high levels were, we wanted to try to create a document that allows the town to function and operate correctly. As we went through, there were a couple of things that were highlighted. So there are five towns, five communities within the state that have a separate Treasurer and a separate Collector. There's five total. Those jobs are very much intertwined. Out of those five, Rockland is the only town in the state that has those positions as elected. Highway Superintendent is another position that we are proposing to move to an appointed versus elected. A couple of reasons why we want to do this. Let me preference this, that all three current elected officials are all in favor of this charter. Reason why we want to do this, and I think it's very, very important, I don't think everyone understands, the qualifications for an elected office, are you 18, you're a registered voter, and you live in town. So think about that again. The qualifications are 18, registered voter, live in town. That could put a person running a department, by the way, the Treasurer and the Collector, handle, what's our budget this year, $78 million?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So $78 million, they handle through their offices. There are no requirements for the job in the town of Rockland, other than they're 18, they live in town, and they're a registered voter. Okay? So I think it's real important. There was one other thing that came really clear quickly. The, one of the first questions that the Collins Center asked was, can you provide an organization chart for the town? The answer was, I couldn't do that, or we couldn't do that as a committee. So they said, we will, we will put one together for you. We reconvened two weeks later. They said, first time in 125 attempts, they could not put together an organization chart for a town. Couldn't do it. This is an organization that has written 125 chart, 125 charters in the, in the state. And one other real key aspect of this, other than those three positions that I talked about, that we would move from elected to appointed, there, nothing else in the charter removes any, any board or any position and changes it from what it currently is, whether it's elected or appointed. So every board would stay as it is today, but one of the things we wanted to do was make the boards consistent. So out of all the boards we have, they were all over the place on what their duties were. And through state statute, any board that, that we have, that state statute takes precedent over the charter or anything else. So Sewer Commission, you know, they, they still do what they do. Parks still do what they do. Library still does what they do through the state statutes. But a couple of our boards currently have, they're required to hire, fire, discipline, reviews, and it's very inconsistent. Those boards are not required to go through the normal HR process of making sure that the pending employee meets minimum qualifications or qualified for the job. You know, not to, you know, not to say anything, but earlier, member of the Board of Health came up, wasn't exactly sure of what the department head did. And that's nothing off, off, off that board. I've been a member of the Board of Selectmen, been a member of the Finance Committee, member of two school building committees. Everyone who is either elected or appointed on a committee, it is a part-time unpaid position. It is impossible to know exactly what's going on. So what this charter would do is set up to make sure that every job has minimum qualifications, all right? Every job has a job description. Every employee that applies for a job meets those minimum requirements. Otherwise, they can't even go through the process for the interview. And that, the hiring process starts at the high level. The town administrator would be responsible for hiring all department heads. And under the department heads, they would be responsible for hiring people within their department pursuant to the HR policy that's created. The other part that I think is very, very important, because there are going to be people that are going to come up here and say, you are taking my right of way as a resident, that I no longer have a voice and I no longer have a vote. This actually will give every single person in this room more of a say. So I didn't know if I was going to ask this question, but I will. So raise your hand if you think the Board of Selectmen run the town. All right, great. So everyone knows that the Board of Selectmen doesn't. Okay. So, and this is a challenge. So when things happen, because I sat on the Board of Selectmen, and I would get phone calls, why is this happening? And I said, well, that's not under the purview. There's very few things under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. How this new charter would structure, the Board of Selectmen, those five individuals who were voted on by everyone here would truly be the voice of everything that goes on in this town, with the exception of the boards that fall under state statutes. Okay? So when there is a problem, it is the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator who would ultimately have influence and say over every department. That is not the case today. They have no influence or say over the Treasurer, the Collector, the Board of Health, the Assessor's Office, the Highway, the Library. I can keep going on and on. Okay? So you'll hear some people coming up. You will most likely hear from me again before this is over. But the idea of this is to create a town that can function efficiently and actually give the townspeople a voice. So thank you.
Fred Mendy's 2 Tansy Lane.
Can you speak up, sir?
Yeah, Fred Mendy's 2 Tansy Lane. So what the gentleman said has, you know, makes sense, but one of the things I'm worried about is that you're asking us to abdicate power from what we have now to an organizational chart, basically. So before you go, my, my, you know, my, I have no power, I have no problems with organizational charts or, you know, creating an organization that, you know, has direct reports, all that. But right now, we decide every three years who is good employees for the town. It's worked for the past, I don't know, couple hundred years? Now, all of a sudden, it doesn't work? You know, I get the 18-year-old with no experience. I've never voted for an 18-year-old with no experience. Have you?
Yeah.
So, so for me, I look at it as one more step, one more way of us abdicating our voter power to the government, the governors. So for me, I say no, wait. I mean, this is a big decision to make in 10 minutes. How many of you actually read this and understood it? Five, six? That's a lot. That's not a lot. And what they're asking you to do is quite significant. So think about it.
So let me, let me respond. So as far as taking the vote away or taking your say, so four elected positions currently that are paid, three of which in this proposal would move from elected to appointed. So first position, Treasurer. Can you tell me who your choices have been since 2009? Hold on, hold on, hold on. So I'll make this simple. So we have not had a contested race in Treasurer, Collector, or in those two positions since 2009. We have had a contested race in Highway. That was the only one. So we haven't had a choice to who gets in there. And I take it back saying, we've been lucky that the individual, hold on, let me finish. I'll let you finish. We've been lucky that people who have pulled papers to run in those offices have been able to do the job, but that's not always going to be the case. But we really haven't had a choice.
No, I, point well taken, but that's the beauty of elections. Every three years, you make that choice, right? I mean, of course, I'm not going to remember. I mean, God, I mean, does anyone remember? I mean, it's really hard, but what does that have to do with us giving up our vote to the Board? I personally don't want to give a Selectman absolute power. You just vote every three years. You don't like that person, you don't like the job they're doing, you fire them. Just like everyday work. You and I, we have to show up our jobs every day. You're not doing your job, you're unqualified, whatever the case is. Your boss, your CEO of your company makes a decision, sorry, it's not going to work out. You have that power. Every three years, you are the CEO of this town. They don't make it, you get rid of them. Why give, why give it up? Thank you.
Mrs. Furlong?
Celine Furlong, 677 Union Street. I just want to let you know, Rich, that I went through a list of the cities and towns in Massachusetts today. There are 77 separate Treasurers and Collectors in the state of Massachusetts. Not five, 77. 26, 27 percent, oh. So that was wrong. We don't have to wait every three years if we don't like the job someone's doing. We can recall them. We can recall and reelect. But if we appoint people, then they pay their taxes to any other town that they live in. We're not necessarily going to get the most qualified person. I don't necessarily want the Selectmen running every other office. Say the Board of Selectmen goes into the Treasurer and says, no, no, don't report that because I don't want this person to have their name in the paper because they're a nice guy. Then that person now owes the Selectmen or the town administrator a favor. So giving up our power, I have, I have three or four different amendments here for this, and I do actually have a question. I'd like a definition of Superintendent of Public Works. What departments are you putting in under the Highway Department? I couldn't actually see where you were taking him out as an elected, but what is Department of Public Works?
So I'll answer that. So the way, so the Treasurer and Collector, because we are looking to join that into one position, so we had to write that into the charter, right? Saying that they would move, those, those individual positions would move into one combined appointed position. Because everything that we do has to get approved by the state, so the recommendations by the Collins Center was to just remove what was in the old charter that designated the Highway Superintendent as elected, just remove that, and then that would automatically go to appointed.
Okay, but Department of Public Works was my question. What is the Department of Public Works?
So there isn't a Department of Public Works, but part of-
What will it be?
Don't know if it will be. So what this, what this charter allows is for the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to look at the structure of the town and create various departments that don't exist today, if, that allows it to function more efficiently. So you heard earlier where they had to create a new department for the cemetery, and there are two employees there. And they have to take care of that cemetery, but it's not enough for full-time work. In order for that to happen, Dave had to agree that, you know, as part of this, those employees, if they're not in the cemetery, could then go to the Highway. So if they, if they deemed it was, it was better to create a DPW in how they wanted to structure it, they could do that. Same thing for Finance. So I'll give you, you know, so currently Assessor, Treasurer, Collector, and Accountant are four separate entities. A lot of towns, that's one, that's one entity, right? That they create a, a Finance Team or a Finance Department, so all that, all those persons, the personnel can be prostrated. There's one person overseeing it, better forms of communication. But this charter, if you look at it, doesn't, doesn't put in place that, that any department would be created. It allows the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen to recreate, to create a department or take different departments and put it under one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you just answered my question.
Okay.
I'm just wondering how many departments are getting swallowed up by the DPW? But we can move on. Do I need to, should I do my amendments now?
No, I'm going to let, I'm going to let these two ladies speak before that. I will bring you back down if you have amendments. Mrs. Parsons, is that you there?
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. I was a Selectman for six years in this town, and we worked with the current charter that is in place right now and didn't have a problem with it because we worked with the elected officials in different departments like Water and Sewer. And I can tell you that in terms of, of Water and Sewer, they are ruled by the Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency through the Clean Water Act. So they have very specific rules and regulations that they have to go by. And I think there's a Water Superintendent in here now over there. Is that you, Crystal?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. What I have to say is that this is taking away our right to vote. As that gentleman said, every three years, if we don't like a person in terms of the job that they're doing, we can vote them out. In 2008, there was a race for the Tax Collector, which is now the Town Collector, and the current Town Collector won. There are issues in this document that gives all power to the town administrator, but the town administrator and this Board of Selectmen may not be here, you know, years down the road, but this charter is still going to be here. And when it comes to saying that there, you know, education and requirements that they have, all that's in this charter is it says that they are eligible through merit and fitness. That's it. It does not mention any kind of education or going through the Human Resources permit. And also, it doesn't even mention some of the things that are in the Town Charter, such as we, we have a Veterans Agent, but that's missing. We have Community Preservation Act, that's missing from this charter. There's other, well, it does say there's an Airport Committee, because I know that that was something they were talking about. But we actually have a helicopter pad over on the base. So yeah, the Airport Committee might be a little old, but it may need to be updated to a, you know, currently helicopter pad, so on and so forth. And I would really ask you not to ever give up your right to vote, because once you do, you will never get it back. So please, I appreciate the effort that was put into this, but it's a little bit too much. We could have done a few increments. I am not in favor of appointing a Treasurer/Collector. I'm not in favor of appointing a DPW, because you have to have certain expertise for those things, and that takes away our right to vote. Thank you.
Rich, Rich, I'm going to let the other, before you answer any questions.
Can I just respond to that?
No, I'm going to let, I'm going to let somebody else, and then you can have your say.
Teresa Buffam, 15 Condon Circle. I'm glad Mary mentioned the Veterans Agent. I'm getting a little older, but I, and my eyesight's going. I didn't see the Conservation Commission anywhere in here. Maybe, I don't know why, but I'll just throw that out. Also, from what I'm hearing tonight, but I did not see in the charter, which I, the proposed charter, which I read, and I- proposed charter, which I read, and I don't have the old charter to compare to, so I'm at a loss, which would have been helpful.
For what?
Sir.
Let her finish.
Maybe I don't have access to the internet. I'm at the town meeting right now, okay? You could have provided the old charter.
Let's, let's play nice.
Okay, I'll play nice.
Both.
So what I'm hearing tonight, that I did not read in the charter, is that there's a potential for, say, the Department of Public Works to include our water commissioners and our sewer commissioners, our tree warden, in addition to our, our highway superintendent. What I'm also hearing tonight is that there's a potential for the five financial offices, accountant, assessor, treasurer, collector, I forget the fifth one, to come under a broad umbrella of some kind of finance commission or something. And I don't know, I've been around the Commonwealth, you know, I don't know every city and town, but I don't know of any towns that have that. I mean, was any research done on that? Although, you know, your research is contradictory from what Ms. Furlong gave us, so I don't know how reliable it is. But those are the points I want to make. I agree with what everybody else said, taking our votes away. It's a slippery slope we're going down here, guys. Okay, thank you very much.
And I am going to let Mr. Stevens, who's a member of the Board of Health.
Hello, Robert Stevens, 62 Concord. So I'm someone who's lived in, I mean, I grew up on public housing, so I've bumped around all over the South Shore, kind of really wherever the rental market took us. And I lived in Hanson for a bit, and we had an issue at town meeting where there was a town tree warden, and every year, it's a, it's a one-year term, so every year, the tree warden, you kind of like hope that they run, and if not, then it's a write-in, and you know how that goes. But we ended up voting at that town meeting to, you know, end up taking the tree warden away. And, you know, you, well, we actually ended up making it an appointed term. It was like, well, do we make it, you know, three or five years so that we can actually, like, whenever we find someone dumb enough to volunteer for it, are we able to just make them do it for longer, or do we actually make it appointed? And so we ended up making it appointed, not making it a longer term. And again, you know, you had, you did have people, obviously, that come down like, oh, we're taking our right to vote away. And before this, you know, before we went over this, we were kind of told, you know, you're going to have people that come up here and tell you that your vote's going to be taken away, and it's because it is. And I just want you to know that, like, as someone who's voted in the past to make something appointed for a tree warden in Hanson, I voted for that, but I wouldn't, I would urge all my fellow residents to vote against this because, like, what the gentleman from, I don't know what street, but was saying earlier, it's just, it's not like one, it's a magnitude of things that you're kind of, we're being asked to do right now. And again, when you, as someone who votes in town and does things in town and has voted for an appointed position before, I wouldn't vote for this to make this appointed. It's, it's just too much. Thank you.
Rich Penny, I'm going to let you speak because I don't, you had a lot of questions from two or three passed, and then I'll get this lady get caught up in answering their questions. Go ahead.
So preference this, this charter does not impact the school or water. So school falls under DESI, whole separate thing. Our water is actually joint with Abington. If there were to be any thought about looking at what the charter is, that would actually require Abington. So this does not include water at all. This includes only town departments, all right? So I'll preference that. You know, I keep hearing, taking, you know, our vote away. And the reality is, someone, so I've lived here my whole life, almost 60 years old, been very involved in the last 20 years within the town, a multitude of things. I also have a pretty strong business background. I've run a couple of different business units, done a couple of startups. And one of the challenges that we continue to face is how this town is structured. It, it causes us at times to not make the right decisions or miss opportunities. It's also not efficient in how we all work within the departments. It has nothing to do with the people that work in those departments. They work really hard, right? And this has nothing to do about, about that. This has to do with setting up a structure that allows the town employees to actually work in unison, in more cohesiveness. So think about this. You're saying, I don't want to give up my vote. The three individuals who are currently elected in those positions all want this charter to pass because they know what it does for their job. It allows them to be more efficient. It allows the town to plan better, right? It allows each and every department to function better. So as, you know, oh, you don't want to put together a DPW, you don't want to put together a finance department. Well, you want to do these things because you can start to share resources in those departments, can actually get more work done, right? So the park department in the summer is extremely busy, extremely busy. We don't have enough people in the parks department in the summer to get the job done, right? But in the winter, they're slow. Now, because the department heads do a good job of talking, they do share some services. But it would make it much easier if it might be under one department. So again, when, when things get busier, you can start to share. Same thing on the finance, as you start to, to work through it, right? So when the treasurer and the collector and the assessor and the accountant, accountant are all working in unison, and you can start to share resources in the office. And I'll go back to the, the elected piece.
No, no.
It's three, we're talking about three elected-
I'm going to answer his questions.
Okay. No, I'm good. Go ahead. Let's get the questions.
Lady, ma'am?
Sherry Valley, 411 Pond Street. I just want to say that my comments today are personal and should not be attributed to any other entity, but I feel that this new charter is rushed and incomplete. Several positions, including the veterans agent, have been omitted without explanation or provision. Don't vote for something on the promise that they'll figure it out later. The Board of Assessors, the Board of Health, the Board of Library Trustees, the Board of Park Commissioners, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, the Housing Authority, and the Planning Board, these are all boards elected by you, the people. This charter undermines a board's authority by subjecting department staff hiring to a town administrator approval. So who is the staff accountable to and whose directives will they follow? This charter also undermines a board's authority by taking away their ability to bid in award contracts and gives it to the town administrator. No disrespect to Mr. Lapp, but this charter opens the door to misconduct by future town administrators. It allows the town administrator to dissolve or reorganize any department and transfer their funds to another department. Those funds are voted on and approved by you. You did that tonight. This charter allows the Board of Selectmen and the administrator to make any changes they want without voter input. For new appointments, if a future town administrator fails to notify the Board of Selectmen, causing the Board of Selectmen to fail to act, that appointment is automatically approved. Provisions for the removal of appointed persons and their rights to a public hearing is omitted. We currently have that in our charter. So all these appointments that they're talking about, there's no provision for removal. So consider the possibilities if there was a bad future town administrator. Don't vote for something that's going to be studied later. That's in Section 716. Town employees are employed until their duties are transferred to another person. In other words, they're employed until they're not. So ask them how they feel about this section. I appreciate the efforts the Charter Committee went through, and it seems like a good idea on the surface, but the document is incomplete and substantially changes the structure of our current town government. So the committee should go back, do better, and involve more residents. I'm asking you to vote no on this article.
Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Park Commissioner, member of CPA. Rich, you're out of touch with the park department, for one. The guys do work during the winter. When was the last time you were in the park?
Now, now, now.
Hey, he's been speaking.
No, don't say hey.
I want the floor, I got the floor.
You're not going to start an argument with Rich Penny. Right now. You can say your piece all you want.
He has not been, I've been a member of the park department now for going on 10 years. Never seen this gentleman at the, at the garage to see what we do. My guys work all winter long, working on machineries, getting everything up and running for the spring for him to make that comment. Number two, we just got in this book a month ago as a department head, and we got to read it a little bit. You need more time to read this, to understand it, and understand where they're going with it. I say vote no.
Rich, before, I'm going to allow somebody to make amendments, and then, I told her to hold off.
So should you choose, Celine Furlong, 677 Union Street in Rockland, should you choose to vote for this article, my amendments are Article 39, C 2.03 on page 66, remove, sorry, I have to look at it. It's the town clerk shall appoint an assistant town clerk, remove the comma, put a period, and remove everything else. Because now you've just given the town administrator ruling over the town clerk. So that's amendment number one.
Do I have a second?
Second. I need a copy of that.
Also on page 66, Article 39, C dash 2.04, remove this section. We don't need a treasurer, collector. Our people are doing great jobs, and there is no need to give all the power to the town administrator. We can have those people earning this nice salary, you just voted for them, they can pay their taxes to the town of Rockland. Anybody appointed may not live in the town of Rockland, so they'll pay their taxes outside.
Subject to the approval of the town administrator, she wants it removed. She wants to give the other motion.
There's one more right there, Karen.
No, no, no.
Yep.
In C 2004, only because I was trying to make sure I had the other one right, you want that removed completely?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion, that second motion? Second. All right, other motion?
I guess my other, the other one wasn't actually a motion. Earlier, when I had asked the definition of the Department of Public Works, because I already see that the highway is going to eat the park. So that's not actually a motion.
Okay.
We're good.
Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
This lady here? And then I'm going to let-
Karen Ripley, 35 Blanchard Street. Just because it's come up a few times, but we haven't gotten a clear definition, the definition between a department and a board or committee, and why boards and committees, some of them weren't mentioned in the charter.
Rich, you answer those.
So one other thing, I know we talked about, some asked about the health agent, some of the other boards. So state laws have changed dramatically since our charter was created. So back then, the charters tended to be much more defined, and there were a lot of specificity in the, in the charter. That really has kind of changed, and that's where bylaws come in. So another part of this process, if, if this were to pass, this does not take effect, and Article 7 kind of lays out how it does, but it doesn't take effect until there is a full bylaw review of every bylaw in town to make sure that our current bylaws do not contradict what the charter is. And going forward, and here's another reason why we're looking to do this. So when a charter is changed, and there's a reason why we left the charter to have a lot of flexibility, all right? Because you don't know what is going to happen, right? Our charter has been very rigid, and it does not, for anyone who's worked within the town, they realize the restrictions that it, that it gives you. This would, would allow those, whoever happens to be the town administrator, whoever you happen to vote in as the, the members of the Board of Selectmen, along with all of the committees. And again, reminder, none of the committees change. And in most of the committees, their function does not change at all. A handful that have hiring responsibilities now, that would move away. And one of the reasons is, every board is, whether it's appointed or elected, it's a volunteered board, all right? It's not a full-time. I don't know about you, but going through a hiring process, I want to, I want to follow a process to make sure that we, we can find the right candidates and then go through that process, all right? So we're not taking that away, all right? And again, reiterating, the three elected members, they, they're for it. And again, so the bylaws would go into detail about veterans and conservation and all that. And those are changed at town meeting, not as a charter that has to go through the state. So it actually would allow the town and the residents to make changes to how the town functions much, much easier than it does today, okay?
Ms. Buffam?
I'm going to speak as to the amendments, if that's all right with Mr. Moderator.
Yeah.
I don't think we can amend our way out of this. And for example, the Second Amendment that my, my neighbor, my good neighbor proposed, if we adopt that amendment and do away with the collector-treasurer position in the proposed charter that replaces the old charter, we will not have a treasurer, collector. We need to be, this needs to be up or down. I recommend a down vote, but we cannot amend our way out of this. And thank you for the clarification on the veterans agent, the Conservation Commission, and the Preservation Commission. I appreciate that.
Before, before we get to that, Rich, no, I'm going to have you answer that question, but on those, on the town council, on those amendments, there appears to be nothing, Ms. Buffam is right, there is nothing, there'll be nothing there as far as the town treasurer, collector, number one. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Moderator. The existing language in the charter has Section 2.04 and 2.05 that calls for an elected treasurer and an elected tax collector. If the amendment were to go through deleting the call for an appointed treasurer, collector, you'd still need to put something back if you were going to keep those two elected positions. You would have to add language.
So in other words, if they, if the, if the whole, this whole question got approved, with those, and the amendments were approved, we would have no language for, for town treasurer, collector? and the amendments were approved, we would have no language for town treasurer collector?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, Rich, you want to answer the questions that Ms. Buffum asked you about veterans? Is that, Ms. Buffum?
I had asked, she said, "Thank you." I asked.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion to move the question and a second.
Second.
All those in favor of wanting to move the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted to move the question. Now, first, we're going to take up the two amendments before we move forward. The first one was in section, on page 66, Section 203(c). The town clerk shall appoint an assistant town clerk, and it said what they wanted removed was subject to the approval by the town administrator. In the absence of incapacity of the town clerk, the assistant town clerk shall exercise. So they're taking out subject to the approval. We have, we have nothing to say who will appoint her at that point. So that's the First Amendment. All those in favor of adopting the First Amendment as written signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted down the First Amendment. The Second Amendment is C 204, just below it, which says that what they've taken out is, it just is going to say town treasurer collector, and what, there'll be nothing how she gets the job. It's nothing about voting her in, electing her, or appointing her. So the first action is going to be to, on the amendment, all those in favor of adopting that amendment with no language signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's, we voted down both amendments.
Thank you.
Now, on the entire, on the entire article as printed in this warrant, Article 39, all those in favor of adopting Article 39 as written signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted not to adopt the article.
I'd like to reconsider Article 39.
I'm sorry, one more time.
I'd like to reconsider Article 39.
I have a motion and a second to reconsider Article 39. This takes a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 39 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted, that's definitely a two-thirds, you voted not to reconsider the article. Articles 40 through 44 contain a, pieces of land, parcels of land, that's on page 83, where there is a map in the property inside of those dark lines, which encompasses from about the corner of Reservoir Park Drive to the Hingham Line to the Southeast Expressway down Hingham Street. I am going to call on the Planning Board, Chairman of the Planning Board, Mike Corbett, and then I'm going to call, then he's going to call on, having a brain mis, going to call on the town planner to describe what these five articles are about. They all relate to the MBTA zoning issue. If, when we take a vote, we're going to take a vote on all five articles at once. So, Mr. Corbett, would you take over?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, in accordance with Mass...
Mr. Corbett's a quiet guy. Mike, you got to speak up a little more.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Rockland Planning Board held an advertised public hearing and review of the articles related to the zoning bylaw changes submitted for the annual town meeting warrant for the town of Rockland. The public hearing was held on Tuesday, February 27, 2024, at 7:30 p.m. at the Lecture Hall at the Rockland High School. The Board reviewed and unanimously voted to follow the zoning article as submitted, the MBTA article, community articles 40 through 44. Planning Board makes a motion to recommend these five articles. We voted unanimously five to zero, and now I'd like to introduce Allison Quinn to do a little presentation.
All right, I have a motion to adopt these five articles. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Now, now it's the town planner's turn.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, everyone. As Mike mentioned, I'm Allison Quinn. I'm Rockland's town planner. I've been working in the planning space in municipal government for about 20 years. Is that better? Can you hear me now? Okay.
Mary, excuse me, Allison. Mary, why don't you sit down for a few minutes, because you'll be blocking somebody else. Okay, Allison.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm here to give you a little bit more information about the planning board articles presented in the warrant. The first group of warrant articles will be related to MBTA community zoning compliance, and the second group of articles are related to the flood maps. I'm going to break down the MBTA communities law into three different sections. The first part is a little bit more information about the law. The second will be Rockland's plan for compliance, and third is what noncompliance will look So the articles for discussion are 40 through 44, and they will be discussed and voted on together. These articles only require a simple majority vote. This is a state law that was introduced as part of the Housing Choice Initiative in 2021. The purpose of this law is to require that the town zone for multifamily housing buy right. Rockland has been deemed by the state as an adjacent community, meaning the town is next to a community with rapid transit. Each category has different thresholds for compliance. There are 177 communities throughout the state that are similarly required to comply with this new law, because they are tied to infrastructure investment in the MBTA but not directly tied to MBTA service. The deadline for compliance for Rockland is December of this year. We have had eight community meetings, two planning board public hearings, in addition to repeated discussion at various Boards of Selectment meetings. We have published all information, documentation, and resident questions online, in addition to two WRPS interviews to help inform residents. This proposal is for an area north of Hingham Street, next to the park and ride. Please see the map on page 83 of the warrant or on the handouts that you may have picked up on your way in tonight. This is only zoning. This does not require to be provided, I'm sorry, this does not, this is only zoning, this does not require that development actually occur. Water and sewer infrastructure are not required to be provided by the town to the area. Two key highlights from the proposed zoning bylaw, or the rules that dictate what can be built in this district, include a minimum of 50% of the parcel is required to be kept as open space. Building heights are limited to four stories. In addition to multifamily buy right, the zoning encourages small-scale retail, arts and cultural uses, restaurants and specialty retail, including small-scale grocery. To determine the district area, we worked with a team of professional consultants with access to the state's MBTA zoning model to help us evaluate three potential district areas in Rockland. The Rockland portion of Union Point, the existing 40R district along the Union Street area, and the, and the area surrounding that existing 40R, and the proposed district on the warrant tonight. The proposed area on the warrant tonight is the only option that met the minimum modeling requirements from the state and had the least potentially negative impact on Rockland. The Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will revoke state, I'm sorry, if we aren't in compliance, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will revoke state grant funding, over $19 million in state funding grants for Rockland alone. The Attorney General will file a lawsuit. I know that both Milton and Marshfield have been in the news lately. To date, 44 other cities and towns have become compliant by adopting a district in their community. The only town that is not in compliance is Milton. They have already lost grants, and they have also had to retain legal counsel to represent the town in the litigation brought forward by the state's Attorney General. This is all funded by that town's taxpaying base. In the case of Marshfield, they have until December 2024 of this year to be in compliance with this law. They will need to retain a consultant to model a new zoning proposal. There is a minimum of 90 days to submit a town zoning proposal to the state to determine compliance, so a new map and proposal would need to be submitted by late August to determine whether proposal would meet the minimum threshold set forth by the state. Trying to meet the compliance model and zoning framework without professional intervention is very difficult. I realize that some folks may have concerns about these articles. As I stated earlier, this is only zoning, not a requirement for development. The town does not have to provide any water or sewer infrastructure to this location. We have done our best to answer questions about potential fiscal impacts and hypothetical situations asked prior to tonight's meetings, but we felt it would be irresponsible to spend tax dollars to further evaluate imagined outcomes, which may never occur, for a zoning amendment, to become compliant with the state law. I want to take a minute to thank the Planning Board for all their support and efforts throughout this process, and to the members of the community who were able to join us. I truly appreciate your time. With that, Courtney Biergad and I, she's the Assistant Town Administrator, are happy to answer any questions related to the state law, Rockland's proposed amendment to satisfy compliance with this law, or what is at risk of noncompliance. Thank you.
Courtney, are you going to speak? No?
I'm going to answer any questions.
Okay. Mrs. Parsons?
Mary Parsons, 754 Union Street. I have a couple of questions, because I'm hearing that the legislature may loosen up some of the requirements, like us being required to come up with an area for zoning for the housing, and how many housing units are they asking for? How many housing units does Rockland have to put in? And when you say it's only zoning, it's not only zoning, because the zoning goes, is attached to an area of land, and in particular, this area of land is owned by a developer. I would just want to make that clear to everybody. How you vote is, you know, up to you, but that's the reality. It was a different zoning three years ago, and we said no to that, but everyone should know, zoning comes with an area of land that is attached to, it's not in thin air. So how many housing units in? Another issue, there's a Supreme Court decision, court case that we won back in, I think, 1992, 93, and I wonder how it's going to impact that, because you have Commerce Road in Hingham and Commerce Road in Rockland, and the issue was that the two not be joined because of different zoning.
So I'm going to try and answer those kind of one at a time, and so if I've missed something, just let me know, okay? Can you hear me okay? All right. So your first question, I think, was, so how many housing units? I believe we're somewhere a little over 1,000, is that sound?
Right around 1,200 units is the maximum amount of units. Sorry. Right around 1,200 units is the maximum capacity, so it's eight, there's a minimum requirement in this law of 15 units per acre. Our zoning is right around 18 units per acre, and what I want everyone to take a look at is this map. There's currently many parcels that are already developed, so the 1,200 units would be if none of these parcels were at all developed. So right now, we're looking at a very small portion of land that had the possibility for development, but again, we are not required to provide water or sewer infrastructure. And Mary, you're right, zoning does set up the rules from which people can invest in our community, but they still have to have things like water and sewer to make their projects fiscally feasible, so I would just also note that.
Right. It's also not next to the park and ride, there's an expressway in the way, and you can't walk to the park and ride there on Hingham Street, you would get killed, easily.
Yes. It's not about whether or not it's connected to the park and ride, it is in the spirit of the MBTA.
Right, but it's also supposed to be walkable, and it's not.
Well, that's not, that's not a requirement in the law. The law requires us to zone a minimum amount of acreage.
Right.
And allow at least 15 acres per, or 15 units per acre. So those are two very basic pieces of the legislation that we're required to write into the district.
And this is by right, so they come in by right, so there are a lot of issues of zoning that they can just do it by right. They can bypass some of it.
No, so I want to be clear, and I know that that's like, kind of like a conflated issue. This does not allow any development proposal, should anything ever come forward, to circumvent local controls. It's very clear that, you know, the application would come into the Planning Board, if it needed to go before the Conservation Commission, it would, it would need to go before the Sewer Commission, any stormwater would have to be mitigated on site. So all of the local controls that we have now would still be in place, should any project ever decide to come forward.
Okay. The court case, though, that will be an issue in terms of how are you going to deal with that?
So the court case, we just kind of became aware of, and so I've been trying to read through it, and Mary's right when she says that, I believe this court case is talking about the Hingham Street parcels that had to be accessed, but they wanted to come in on Commerce Road.
Right. They wanted to come in from Hingham.
Correct. So my understanding of how it's written, and please bear with me, because I'm not a law expert, and I don't, did you, could you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, I can help answer it. Chris Kenny, attorney, Land Counsel. I think you're referring to the Beal case?
Yes.
Okay. So the Beal case, right, it was a case where they wanted to develop the vast majority of, I believe, a shopping center, or something to that effect, and most of it was Hingham, and there was a small portion on the Rockland side. The Rockland Planning Board actually denied it, denied, the Hingham side approved it, but the Rockland Planning Board denied the based, the subdivision plan based on zoning, because the Rockland portion was not zoned at that time for what Hingham was zoned for.
Right.
So that's basically, so that actually case went to SJC, Supreme Judicial Court, and that decision by the Rockland Planning Board was upheld. So they said, the basis that it was the zoning, the Planning Board correctly said that because that portion of Rockland's section was not zoned for the same, that what Hingham was zoned for, the SJC upheld it, and, and that was the result of the case.
So what happens if Hingham now makes their side compatible to our side? What happens to that court case?
Well, I mean, really, the holding that court case was kind of basic. It basically just said that the zoning, it said the Planning Board, at the time, the zoning was, it was not zoned for that.
But now we're changing the zoning.
Right.
And then that means, I want to know, does anyone know what Hingham zoning is going to be on that side that would make it so that they can connect Commerce Roads?
I'm not aware of, yeah, I'm not aware of what the current zoning is on the other side of Hingham. Obviously, this would change the zoning for these current parcels.
Right, because like I said, the developer owns the land.
Right, but in terms of that court case, one, you know, again, it depended on the zoning at the time, so as you said, it's going to, you know, the zoning was, you know, the proposal... the proposed zoning amendment would change to this, but as to how it's going to affect the next, you know, what the zoning is next door, what's going to happen there, you know, I can't speak to what Hingham is going to do, obviously.
To the best of my knowledge, Mary, that is not the area that Hingham is, has, is using for their MBTA compliance, that they're...
Well, I'm kind of familiar with this whole map and that area, so yeah, it can come into play easily because it's going to, but it's at some point, because you have the entire area as the map for the MBTA law.
Sure. Again, I can only tell you, like, what we're proposing on our side. I've had some conversations with, with what Hingham is trying to propose, and it is not along, it doesn't match up on our side with the map. So I, you know, the honest answer is, Mary, I have no, like, again, this is just zoning, I have no way to tell you what will happen on Commerce Road.
Because it's going to open us up to a lot of traffic, that's the issue I have, and how are you going to mitigate that, you know?
Well, again, as, as we talked about a few minutes ago, you know, we have local control, so if there were traffic concerns, we could require traffic studies, traffic mitigation, all of the things that are now part of, like, an overall development, you know, proposal that are weighed when they're trying to, you know, look at a site plan review, all of those would be weighed here, too, traffic studies and the like.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add also, when we're talking about as of right by right, that means that special permit is not required. So a special permit isn't saying, okay, these things can be, these certain uses are by right, meaning they don't need a special permit, but as Allison was saying, that doesn't mean that all the other requirements that Allison was speaking of, those would still, you know, be required on a case-by-case basis.
How many acres actually is the, is it twenty-nine acres?
The zoning, the zoning district is around sixty acres in total.
So sixty acres can be built on, so it's...
No, not built on, well, yes, sixty acres in theory could be built on if, if, if the existing property owners of all these parcels that have a development already there, if they decided to redevelop, then yes, sixty, all sixty acres would be developable, yes.
But don't forget, it's required fifty percent. Fifty percent of any project is required to have open space.
Yeah, but that, that's also retained detention areas, strips of, on sidewalks, because that's according to MAPC, a grassy strip along a sidewalk is considered open space, wetlands are considered open space, so you have to take a look, you can't just say, most people would think fifty percent open space, and they'd think that they can stand on it, walk on it, and so on and so forth, it's not that case, they have a lot of definitions of open space. So thank you.
Mrs. Childs?
Hi, Lori Childs, 234 North Avenue. What are we doing here, people? We either want to live in this town and have it crumble around us, or have really cool stuff like movie theaters or whatever, finally, in Rockland, maybe a grocery store or is available to develop there, outside cafes, I mean, we're in charge of making this town what we want it to be, and if we do nothing, you know, talk to the Sewer Commission, it's just crumbling around us. We're trying to do something to change that. So that's, that's all I have.
Sir. Sir. Thank you, sir.
Hi, everybody. Fred Mendy, 210 Zilane. I want you to open up to page seventy-three, says Article Three, Town Meeting, Legislative Powers. You should feel good about this. You should be vested in the qualified voters of the town. What the state's trying to do now is take that away from you by mandating, yes, it's exactly what they're doing, and eighteen hundred units, that's going to increase the population potentially in Rockland by twenty percent, so an additional thirty-six hundred people in this town. Short-term costs, not a problem. Long-term costs, infrastructure, police, fire, schools, that's where the cost is going to come from. State doesn't care about that now. Sure, no sewer and no water hookup, they're going to pay for that, but the long-term costs, I don't know about you, but right now, my taxes is more than my mortgage. It's only going to increase. Again, eighteen hundred units potentially, thirty-six hundred more people in this town, who's going to pay for that, for that infrastructure? Everybody in this room. I, you know, upgrading Rockland, I get it, you know, I moved from Boston, I got out of college here thirty years ago, I love the town, I came to this town because it was eighteen thousand people, small, know my neighbors, no problems, it's quiet. Continuing growth is sometimes is not a good thing, but again, emotionally, legislative power, we have it. Doesn't it feel good? Short-term costs, the state's going to cover it, great. Long-term costs, you're talking, again, schools, fire, police, you're going to pay for it long-term, not the developers. I say vote no. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ben Leatherman, 631 Hingham Street. So I live very close to the proposed area that's, sorry. Ben Leatherman, 631 Hingham Street. So I live very close to the proposed area of development, and right now, it's not very nice, it's not walkable, there's one strip mall, a couple hotels and one restaurant there, it would be great to have businesses in that end of Rockland, it'd be great to have additional development there, and yes, there might be additional people, that's additional tax base as well, and I will say, I did not buy thirty years ago, we bought our house, like, less than five years ago, and my mortgage is a lot more than my tax right now, so, thanks, everybody, please vote yes on this.
Ma'am, I saw you walk down.
Hello, Nancy Collins, 637 Union Street. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what we're voting on, which is that there is a state law that we need to be in compliance with, that is a portion of land that is potentially developable, that's for zoning. If we don't, we're going to have legal repercussions that we're going to have to pay for, and so I understand that there's these theoretical arguments that people are putting out, that things are, people are going to come in, but really focus on the issue, this is something that we have to do, if we don't, then we have to be prepared to pony up money, and if you want to save money, then you would vote in the affirmative for this. Thank you.
This person over here? Yeah?
And Mr. Moderator, can I just make one point as to that point?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what was also brought up was noncompliance of, if you're not in compliance with this state law within, by the end of the year, as was mentioned before, the state can pull the grants, as you can, you know, as everybody knows from the news, Milton, you know, you could be sued by the state as Milton was, but the, there's one, another issue is, within the lawsuit that the AG has filed against Milton, one of the counts is that a receiver be appointed to create the area for Milton to comply. So I'd heard, obviously, on the previous article, there was a lot of discussion about not wanting to give up, you know, your ability to choose, you know, choose who, you know, who your officials are. In a similar fashion, that is a potential, is, you know, here tonight, you have the ability to choose this certain area, I know, you know, a lot of people in town and have been working, you know, really working hard on picking an area that's the least, you know, the least, the least affect the town. If this doesn't pass, and at some point, you know, it got into next year and the Attorney General did sue, that most likely, they would add the same count against the town to add a receiver, to have a receiver potentially choose an area, and that could be an area that, not this area, a different area in town, that, you know, that may not be as, as well thought out as, as, you know, everyone here that has done the work to move forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Julie Sne, 74 Smith Lane. Earlier today, when we started this meeting, if I remember correctly, somebody mentioned that grant funding is about twenty-five percent of our town's revenue, is that the number? Do I remember that correctly?
Before you, let the Town Administrator, I think he can answer your question, then you can continue.
Yeah, I was referring to state aid, so that's different from grants. The numbers that Allison and Courtney mentioned were nineteen million dollars in grant funding from the state that we would lose if we don't pass a compliant zoning bylaw.
Thank you, and to clarify, that's nineteen million dollars in state grants that have been paying for sewer infrastructure, water infrastructure, and roads primarily, is that correct?
Yeah, Allison and Courtney can give you a little bit more detail on the types of grants if you're curious.
So, sure.
You can stay, ma'am, you could have stayed down there.
There are, I think, about seventeen or twenty different grant programs, and it does include Mass Works, which is, does include water, sewer, and, you know, street infrastructure. Sure.
Is there any other, Mr. Stewart? No, I already called on Mr. Stewart from the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Bill Stewart, 29 Birch Bottom Circle, can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. Like a lot of people that I've seen on social media, I think this law sucks. I mean, I think we all do, or most of us do, this is a really lousy law, but if you think that voting against this is going to send the state a message, I think you're mistaken. I quite frankly think the people who've worked on this have created a brilliant proposal, and the reason I say that is, if we have to comply, and I would argue that we do, what's the best way of doing it? Number one, picking a parcel that's already in an area that's commercially developed, not a residential neighborhood, so I think that's really important, isolating it from residential neighborhoods. Second, they picked a parcel that's largely developed already, there's a strip mall, there are auto dealerships, there's an office building, in order to develop that, somebody's got to tear those down, buy those businesses, tear them down, and then start developing, that adds a lot of cost, so I think that was a really good idea. Next is that half the land, as we've already said, is open space, so sixty acres, only thirty of that can be developed, and whether people can walk on those thirty acres or have to use boots to get near it, doesn't really matter, the fact is, half of that land is not going to be developed, so it's not a hundred eighty units times sixty acres, it's a hundred eighty units maximum times thirty acres, that makes a big difference. Finally, again, everything has to go through the town planning process, just as every development does today. Nobody can jump to the front of the line, nobody can hook up water and sewer, nobody can create a traffic problem unless we, as Rockland residents and our Planning Board, allow it. We have total control over whether this is developed or not. This is a great solution to what's really an awful problem for the town of Rockland. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion to move the question, do I have a second? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're voting on Articles Forty, Forty-One, Forty-Two, Forty-Three, and Forty-Four, which is about eighteen pages, Forty-Four. This is all to amend the Rockland Town Code, and it's basically establishing the districts for MBTA community, mixed-use development districts. This is a simple majority, which the state betrothed on us, not like our own, the other zoning, we have to get two-thirds, so this is a simple majority. All those in favor are adopting Articles Forty through Forty-Four as printed in your warrant, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted to pass Articles Forty to Forty-Four as printed. What we have, what we have left are three articles, Articles Forty-Five, Forty-Six, and Forty-Seven, that is also in the same letter, that, this is the FEMA floodplain map, and Mike Corbett, you want me to do it, or do you want to do it?
I'll do it.
Okay, just tell us about what you, when you had your vote and so forth.
All right, and according with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Five, the Rockland Planning Board held an advertised public hearing to review the articles related to the zoning bylaw changes submitted for the annual town meeting warrant for the town of Rockland. The public hearing was held on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, 2024, at seven-thirty at the Lecture Hall at the Rockland High School. This is for the FEMA floodplain, Articles Forty-Five through Forty-Seven, the Planning Board makes a motion to recommend them all, and here's Allison, if you have questions.
These articles represent minor modifications to Rockland's FEMA floodplain maps. As confirmed in a letter from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, dated March twenty-fifth of 2024, no significant changes have been made to the flood hazard data on the preliminary firm for Plymouth County. The town has had to vote at town meetings previously on similarly required map updates. The town will likely need to vote regularly to adopt these maps for purposes of national flood insurance program eligibility. We were notified on September twenty-ninth of 2023 that there were some minor changes to the FEMA floodplain maps that would require an amendment to the bylaw and map. We received four updated panels related to those changes. It is required that the town vote to amend the bylaw and correlating map so that residents impacted by these minor modifications are eligible for a federal flood insurance plan that is much more affordable to our residents than many private insurance carriers. The firm floodmap panels were posted in the hallway outside this auditorium and have been and still are available online, as well as at Town Hall for any member of the public interested. This is a simple, this is simply a vote to accept the changes needed to comply with FEMA. The articles require a two-third vote for adoption. Thank you.
Do I have any questions? Seeing no questions, I need a two-thirds, I'd like to have a unanimous for these three articles. All those in favor of adopting Articles Forty-Five, Forty-Six, and Forty-Seven, which is the FEMA floodplain maps, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, I need a motion to dissolve the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, don't leave yet, this gentleman's got a question.
I'd like to just revisit and correct, number one, for the town election, just to correct it, that there's only one, for next year's election, that there's only one seat for the Board of Health.
We did correct it.
It was corrected?
Yes.
Without going back? Oh, okay. Well, then that's it, thank you.
It was corrected.
So Forty-Five, please.
That was a uni, all those in favor of adopting as-printed Forty-Five, Forty-Six, and Forty-Seven, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, I know some of you's missed the Bruins. I need a motion to dissolve.
Motion to dissolve.
What did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry.
It is. I have a motion, Doug Becker, 422 East Water Street. I'm on the Historic Commission. I have a motion to hold over the decisions from the Community Preservation Funds, Articles Eleven and beyond, and to immediately freeze their control over those funds until an investigation can be done to explain why the two historic motions that were on the agenda were simply moved out.
Sir?
Yes.
Sir, the only thing, the only thing that could be done at this point is to ask the, ask the body to reconsider which article you're talking about, and if they vote to reconsider, we'd hear it, if they vote not to reconsider, then it's over.
Articles Eleven to Fifteen.
We voted on Eleven and Twelve in the positive. The three articles we did not vote were Articles Thirteen, Fourteen, and Fifteen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The body cannot lawfully approve Articles Thirteen, Fourteen, and Fifteen, consistent with the chairman indicated. We can't spend the money without the strict authorization of the Community Preservation Committee, so even if the body were to vote to reconsider the articles, we can't lawfully approve those funds.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to dissolve the meeting. Second, all those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you.